But I think it's better.
We do, probably.
Anyone else have a thought?
I think, not sure how it's going. You know, when I think about what's happened to us in the last few years, you know, we're getting maintenance of effort. It's not that the county is, you know, cheating us out of that sum of money, but they are getting very creative in the way that they dump things back on us. The nurses, the crossing guards and some other things. I'm not sure how we address that. You know, they're giving us the, you know, they're giving us the maintenance of effort, but we end up with maintenance of effort maybe a little extra, and we still end up with less money because we've had to pick up those things that the county had typically taken care of. So I don't know if you want to figure out a way to address that or maybe just address that with them at some time in the future, one-on-one. But I understand their dilemma, but we also have a dilemma. We can't keep picking up things that end up hurting us overall and our budget hurting us overall. So my thought process would be, Ms. Williams, is to address this also with commissioners directly and let them know, and hopefully our groups that work with us and we work with to provide salaries and benefits would get on board and have a say with the commissioners also, because there is strength in numbers. If you want to get something, you got to show up and let them know what you're thinking. So just a thought. I think it goes beyond just what we're going to do here and our core values. We're going to have to take some action at some point to let them know that they're causing us some headaches.
So, shall we insert the word "local"?
Yes.
So that it reads adequate and equitable local and state funding. All right. And we're fine with the other two? Local control and mandate should be limited and fully funded by the state? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
They're very general. They cover a lot of things. Could be included under each category.
I do. I think they're broad enough.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, then we'll move those ahead. If we have consensus, we'll move those forward for formal adoption at our business meeting on November 7th. That brings us then to the preliminary calendar for the 2018 legislative session. And you have, for comparison purposes, you have the 2017 calendar. We have quite a few to-be-determined dates for 2018. One question that I have, as I was looking over this, and the question arose because I attended the MAB legislative committee meeting yesterday. MAB will be deciding their legislative priorities and initiatives on the 13th of November. So I'm wondering if perhaps we might want to wait until our second meeting in November rather than our first. So, meaning that we would do that, we would do our adoption on the 21st rather than the 7th. Mr. Trotta, do you have any thoughts about sooner rather than later?
When we, I think we should work our way through the six initiatives, and I think after that discussion, I think that we should then discuss whether we should move it from the November 7th meeting to the November 21st meeting.
Okay.
Because there may, the board may find a need to have some consultation with the county commissioners, because several of the initiatives do directly involve matters that they would, I think, have an interest in. So there may be a need for a meeting with the county commissioners, and perhaps that makes even better sense, the move the final determination to November the 21st.
Okay. In terms of the other to-be-determined, I know no other dates that we can fill in there. I don't, I, unless it would be Washington County's Education Day. Has that been, I haven't heard that that's been established. I know that MAB's Legislative Day Luncheon, that hasn't been set yet.
I think that after the, that late yesterday or the day before, they did get a date, and I believe it's February 22nd, but
For MAB?
For the MAB, but Jamie's actually checking that for me right now. Excuse me?
It's on the website. It's February 20th.
February 20th? And that's what day of the week? Well, that's all right. February 20th. My apologies.
Okay. And we have confirmed December 5th, and I think we received an email about that, December 5th, where our meeting with the delegation. So that will be in the morning on the 5th.
Do we know where that will be?
I didn't read the place in the email.
I want to say Hager Hall.
Yes, it is Hager Hall.
I also think the Washington County Community Coalition Day is scheduled for January 31st.
The 31st?
So that's Chamber of Commerce, Gregor Hager's down, day down there.
So will that be the same as the Washington County Board of Education's Day in Annapolis? No. That's, traditionally, we made that the MAB Luncheon Day, have we not?
Exactly. That was one of the
We've made that coincide.
The Legislative Response Team wanted to get some direction from the Board of Education today, and that is, in the past, we've coordinated our day in Annapolis with the same date that MAB has its luncheon. And if you note on the proposed calendar, we've actually scheduled three particular events on the same day. What we've done historically is we've had a meeting with the delegation early in the morning, then we have proceeded to the MAB, Maryland Association of Boards of Education's Day in Annapolis, and then we've also scheduled meetings with elected officials to assist us in moving forward with legislative proposals on that same day. So it's a very busy, active day, and the Legislative Response Team was seeking direction from the rest of the board as to whether you wanted all those events scheduled for the same day.
If it's the 20th, that's a Tuesday, and that's the board meeting day. February 20th, that what you said?
That's for Tuesday.
The 20th?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Well, that's different, because it's been like a Wednesday or a Thursday, I think, in the past.
Right. And what often dictates MAB's calendar is the availability of a meeting area. So that has to be coordinated with the representatives in Annapolis to schedule a location and a time.
I'm showing January 20th as a Saturday?
February.
February.
Oh, February. Okay, that would help to get the right month.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I think I said January.
That is a Tuesday, February 20th.
Well, that complicates things.
Is that a board day?
Maybe we could broadcast live from Annapolis.
Maybe we could add a fourth thing, a board meeting. We could have the delegation meeting, the MAB luncheon, meet with the elected officials, and then find a place to have a 6:00 business meeting. Stranger things have been done, I'm sure. Thoughts? Do we want to then adjust our business meeting schedule and go back to, or not go back, but do something different rather than the first and third? Do the second and the fourth that month to be able to?
There'll be five Tuesdays in January, so I'm moving. Is there anything we'd want to adjust about January? The 9th and the 23rd?
I know, I know we get in trouble when we start playing with
I'm not that last
When we start playing with the schedule. I know it impacts those members who are working and, so.
I say keep our meeting dates the same for that reason.
Keep our meeting dates the same, so then that would mean that we're not going to be able then to participate in the MAB Legislative Day Luncheon or to have that be the board's Day in Annapolis if we're going to be here for
Do we traditionally have several members attend?
Yes.
Or a representative?
Well, in the past, we've had two, at least, the entire Legislative Response Team in the past, so that could be as many as three board members.
Okay.
You went last year. You went, I went.
Yes, you and I went last year.
That was it.
Is there a
Tony will go, all right.
Is there any reason we can't go and have our business meeting a week late? Well, that's On the following Tuesday? The first meeting, the first week, and then
The first and fourth?
Yeah.
Fine with me.
The first and third? Would that work? First and fourth for February?
I think that relies on the people that have jobs.
Well, that's what I may ask. What do you think?
There's plenty of time, though, to plan.
So it would be the 27?
It is still a Tuesday that way, which should be less problems than if it were another day of the week.
I'm retired, so it doesn't matter.
Fine with me.
Doesn't matter to me.
Mr. Rider, would that work for you?
So am I hearing that that's the solution then, to make our board meeting on February 27th, and then that will allow those who want to attend the MAB Legislative Day Luncheon, and then for certain, it will make it possible then for the Legislative Response Team and anyone else who would want to join us in Annapolis on February 20th?
Just for the record, I won't be available for that day, but that's fine.
Okay.
So February 20th, there's going to be the Washington County Board of Education Day in Annapolis?
Yes. If that's, if we're agreeable to that.
Just clarifying.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything else that we can do with that schedule, Mr. Trotta? Do you think we're
What we will do is follow with the delegation, see if we can coordinate that meeting, a meeting with them on February 20th. It's usually a very early meeting, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning, and we'll get the details to you on that.
Just out of curiosity, didn't we used to do our day in Annapolis, didn't we do it in concert with the lobbying coalitions day in Annapolis?
You have sometimes.
We have on occasions, we have on other occasions had selected a day that's separate apart from both the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Day and also the Chambers' Day. So we've, over the years, we have, we have, have not been, have not coordinated that way, but recently, we've aligned it with Maryland Association of Boards of Education's Day in Annapolis, and it's worked out very nicely. It's a very compact day, and Mrs. Cade is very instrumental in securing meetings for us with key elected officials. I believe it was last year, it was the murder fuel tax, and we really spent some quality time with elected officials across the state to gather support for that legislation, which has benefited boards of education across the entire state of Maryland.
Are we, I mean, I'm fine, like I said, I'm fine with it. Our day, MAB Annual Legislative Luncheon Day, is the county delegation meeting the same day also?
It was last year.
Last year. So are we, are we taking a chance by having three things? We taking a chance on losing opportunities to deal, meet with our delegation? I mean, I'm sure they've got
Last year, they made an exception and moved their delegation meeting from, I think, a Thursday to a Wednesday in order to accommodate this group. And my sense is, if you ask at this time, they will schedule their weekly meeting to be at the time you want to meet with them, especially if you are asking this early.
Traditionally, each of the members of the delegation have come into, you know, they're there and available on the day of the MAB Luncheon, because they've come in, and we've been able to have very informal conversation with them in addition to meeting with them in their committee meeting, so.
What time do we start down there? What would
The delegation meeting would typically be at 8:00 in the morning, and the MAB day begins usually at around 10:00 with a legislative meeting that everybody can participate in, and then 11:00 legislators come in and speak, and there's a luncheon. And then time after that to go and visit particular legislators that you want to meet with.
For me, the 8:00 is always a problem, but, I mean, the other things I can get down there, obviously, by 10:00 is pretty easy, but, okay. Okay, thanks.
Well, last year, I think we, you went down with your husband, and I went down, and I think we got hotel rooms
The night before.
And just paid for ourselves, because I wasn't going to get up at 4:00 and traffic.
Make that drive.
Make that drive. I just paid for a hotel room myself.
Okay. All right, well, let's move on then from the calendar, and we'll begin our discussion of our priorities and initiatives and the watch list for this upcoming legislative session. We have two commissions, the Kerwin Commission and the Nott Commission, we're paying very close attention to. The Kerwin Commission will be coming up with their report and recommendation, I believe it's the 20th of December, somewhere
Yes.
Thereabouts. So that's certainly something that we'll be watching.
Though, what I was reading is they may not make that deadline.
Oh, really?
Because there's been a lot of complaints that they haven't really discussed funding yet, and, once again, at their last meeting, they didn't really discuss funding, and so people are concerned that they're not going to be able to make the December 20th.
That's interesting. I hadn't heard that. At yesterday's MAB Legislative Committee meeting, Rick Kerwin was present and made a presentation to the group, and he didn't mention anything other than they would be making their report and their recommendations come December 20th. So we'll see. That should get interesting. We have, for discussion purposes, some initiatives. I don't know that we have to discuss these in order, but we can certainly do them that way, if you'd like. The one on the top of my pile is the repeal of Public Local Law Advisory School Design Review Committee. Does anyone have that?
What progress is being made on, in contacting the county commissioners for consultation and so forth?
I don't know that we have reached out to the county commissioners to talk with them specifically about our legislative priorities and initiatives.
That's correct, and this is one of the initiatives that I think that we would need to have some further conversation with them. Today is seen as a starting point in the discussion to see whether this is something of interest to the members of the Board of Education, and if it is of interest to them, I think it's imperative that we then take that very next step and have some dialogue with the county commissioners' representatives about this initiative, and there's two others that'll be discussed this afternoon, and also, I believe, require some further discussion with representatives of the county commissioners.
I would suggest that if the commissioners and you do agree on this, this would be probably a very easy piece of legislation to get through. It would be looked at as local legislation, and with concurrence between the commissioners and this board, I would think that the delegation would support it. That's not a promise, that's a hope.
So that's a discussion for us to have with the commissioners. Mr. Trotta, we're the only county that it's required of, and it does add, maybe not a huge cost, but any cost is a problem situation. I think definitely we ought to at least try talking to them. Talk with the commissioners about this.
I agree.
Okay, so this would be an agenda item for a hopeful joint
Meeting.
Meeting with the commissioners.
And I think this item adds time to our construction planning process. It also puts some of our members of the school design committee at risk of not bidding on the process, or bidding on a project if they've designed a process. So I think it helps clean all that up if we got rid of this. And then to Mrs. Fisher's point, we're the only county that has such a requirement, and I don't think there's any commissioners left on this board of county commissioners that were here when that initial requirement was put into place.
It looks like, I think that was my first year here. 13 years ago.
13 years. The next one on my pile is to amend the Fairness and Negotiations Act to reduce the cost of the impasse process. This would be a statewide initiative, and to allow for an orderly budget planning process, which would be local initiative. Mr. Trotta, did you want to give some background for us, please?
Prior to 2010, any type of dispute involving a collective bargaining unit was adjudicated by the state Board of Education. It was a very speedy process, it was an efficient process, and it wasn't a very costly process. But in 2010, the Fairness and Negotiation Act was passed, which has set forth a complicated process, a very expensive process, and as many of you are aware of, one of the components of that is referred to as impasse. And when you reach the impasse, there's a very strict timeline to move forward, and both the public school employer, which is the local Board of Education, and the public employee, which is the association or collective bargaining unit, must share in the cost of a mediator, and they're extremely expensive, as the members of the board are aware. That's a cost that is split evenly between the two entities. Our first recommendation, that is, of the Legislative Response Team, is that we would ask the state of Maryland to set up a panel of mediators, identify those mediators, and they would also be responsible for the cost of the mediator. And I think it would streamline the process, would also pass that cost on, from the local entities on to the state government, which has created this new mandate. So that is the first proposal. The second is that if you examine Maryland law, local boards of education and the local government have very strict timelines by which they have to adopt their budgets. If you were to examine that law with the new Fairness and Negotiation Law, you would find that there's absolutely no alignment between the two laws. And as the board's aware, that there have been the situations where we've gone to impasse, the board has adopted its budget, the county commissioners have adopted their budget, but there's still an ongoing labor dispute that then proceeds the impasse. And in those cases where it results in the need for additional compensation, which in all cases, it almost always does, the budget process has been completed. It seems like it's out of alignment. You really should have your negotiations completed prior to the formulation and adoption of your budget. So this is not a new idea. We found out that Prince George's Community College is already doing this, also Montgomery County Community College is already doing this, and they have a provision in the existing Maryland law that says, "In the course of collective bargaining, the public employer and the exclusive representative shall make every reasonable effort to conclude negotiations prior to the budget submission date of the public employer, in order that the governing body of Prince George's County may act on the operating budget of the public employer." So the Legislative Response Team is recommending that we seek legislation to amend the existing law that would align the negotiation process with the budget process. And it's also recommended that we might even further strengthen that existing law to place a 15-day deadline for the completion of negotiations prior to the approval of the local board's budget. We're seeking your comments and your recommendations on those proposals. And I would just point out, the provision about the mediator, that would be a statewide initiative. We're recommending that it be a local initiative as far as aligning the negotiation process with the budget process.
I think, I think they're both good ideas. I'm, Art, do you think, what are the chances the first one will pass, considering we're passing funding back to the state?
Let's say that one's a lot harder than the first proposal we were talking about. Anything that adds money to the state budget is difficult, but legislators know that they also represent local government issues and interests and dollars, so it's possible. I don't know that we know yet what that actual figure would be, whether it's half a million dollars or $2 million or what it is, but it's a very legitimate thing to ask for.
Okay. And I would anticipate that the collective bargaining units would join us in supporting such legislation.
Yes, and that could be of big help.
Okay.
Others? Thoughts?
It sounds good to me if we can pull it off.
So do we want to include this and move this ahead to consider for adoption?
Yes.
Our November meeting? Okay. All right, the next is an annual increase in the maintenance of effort based upon the Consumer Price Index. Mr. Trotta?
Yes, but just by way of background, Maryland law imposes a affirmative obligation on local board, local government across the state of Maryland to give a mandated amount of money for public education. That's referred to as the maintenance of effort. That's calculated by the state, it's monitored by the state, there are consequences if a local government doesn't meet its obligations, they actually intercept their other payments if they don't meet their maintenance of effort. The, one of the proposals from the Legislative Response Team is that once that number is calculated every year, and this, once again, would be a local bill, we're not seeking statewide legislation, this would be a local bill, that in Washington County, that number, that maintenance of effort calculation would then be increased by the increase in the Consumer Price Index. of effort calculation would then be increased by the increase in the Consumer Price Index. So that would be an annual adjustment. Once again, this is a proposal that we should consult with the county commissioners and seek their input.
First year that that would occur. It's not carried over to the next year with another Consumer Price Index. It changes each year, is that what you're?
What happens is that the maintenance of effort is a base number. Now, a local government can, but is not required to, but can give more money than is required by the law. So let's say you're mandated to provide 100 units, and you decide to add 100, you add 20, the following year, your base is 120. So it continues to build from year to year. So you'll see, for instance, Montgomery County, the last time I looked, their base is about $1.4 billion a year that the local government gives to the local Board of Education in Montgomery County. And so it builds. It is adjusted every year based on other factors. The number of students you have affects that. There are certain categories where there's increased funding, students who are free and reduced lunch, you'll see some increase in that number. And what you can also see is a dynamic, whereas one school district is growing, their maintenance of effort number will increase, where perhaps another district, where they're experiencing a reduction in attendance, their maintenance of effort number can be adjusted downward. So it is adjusted, but you add to the base. So what would happen, in response to your question, if it was 100, and you added the Consumer Price Index, and let's say it was 2%, so it's, let's say it's 102 million, the next year, your base would be 102 million, and then you restart the calculation at the 102 number.
I think that's going to be harder to get passed than if it was just the consumer index each year, and not a carryover.
I mean, I like Santa Claus.[753.84][753.84](Laughter). I don't think this has a snowball's chance in hell. Really, I don't. I mean, I think of our delegation and their track record on, you know, things like this, you know. I'd put it in, if you guys want to put it in, that's fine, but I don't, I have no, I just don't see it happening, not with some of the people that we're dealing with. Can I go back one?
Sure.
Mrs. Williams, I apologize, back to the Fairness and Negotiations, which, you know, sounds good, but I think, there's one thing that I think we overlook, you know, if the state or somebody else is paying for mediation. If the state covers the cost of impasse, is there really much of an incentive for people to negotiate and come to an agreement? You know, we tried to avoid impasse because we wanted to save money. And I'm certain, you know, our bargaining unit members feel the same way. They don't want to go to impasse either, it's expensive. But if it's paid for by the state, well, let's just go ahead and do it. What do we lose in that respect? So, just a thought. I mean, I'm fine, like I said, I have, I like winter because I think, I like Santa Claus, but there are some things I just don't think have a chance.
Well, but I think part of this law, though, going to the second page, there's a paragraph there that says, "In order to foster an orderly budget process, the FINA should be amended, excuse me, to require that the collective bargaining process is to be concluded prior to the date that a local board is required to submit its budget to the local governing body." So I think that's incentive to...
They'll have an incentive to go to...
I can't hear you.
They still, there's still no incentive not to go to impasse earlier, whatever, if somebody else is paying it, why not take advantage of it? If it's going to cost them instead of me, why would we do it? So, just a thought. I mean, I'm looking at it from a different perspective, and Stan, you may be right, but, you know, the bottom line is, if somebody else is paying for the impasse procedures other than us or our bargaining unit members, you're more likely to say, well, let's just, we've bargained enough, it's time to move this to impasse so we can get it done before the budget is due.
Well, if I were negotiating, I would want to conclude something before impasse. I think everyone knows my feelings about impasse. But I don't think it hurts to ask. I mean...
Other thoughts?
I hadn't thought of that until Wayne brought it up. I still like the second part, the local part, of the timing. And I'm beginning to think maybe that first part would have implications that might have us going to impasse every year.
Well... And I understand what Mr. Ridenhour is saying about the idea of, well, if someone else is paying for it, then let's just go ahead and do it. The risk you run there is that a decision would be made by the person making the decisions that would not be favorable to you. So that would be one reason why I wouldn't want to go to impasse, regardless of who is paying for it, because you don't know how it's going to turn out. So again, you're hoping for the best, hoping for Santa, but...
And I agree with you, and maybe you don't want to go to impasse, but again, it's, you're more likely for that to happen. And secondly, you know, yes, the person involved in making that decision is there, and he may work against us, or he may vote against us, but you still have to then go to, well, there's nothing here that takes the Labor Relations Boards...
Out of the equation.
You know, out of the equation. So everything's still the same. The only thing that's different is that we're asking the state to pay it, which I'm doubtful about that, but I just have a feeling that, you know, people may be more inclined to take that route, if it's not going to cost them anything upfront. So, just a thought. That's why I brought it back up.
Thank you. All right, let's go back to maintenance of effort. And I had a thought, and I lost it, about the time we switch gears here, but it was something that you said about Santa Claus. Oh, I know what it was. I know what it was. It's always nice to think that our commissioners would be giving us beyond maintenance of effort. But this would be a way that I think would give them an idea of what would be an amount that would be a reasonable amount, that it wouldn't be us making a Christmas list and hoping that Santa delivers on it, you know, whatever that amount is, that this would be using an index that would determine what a reasonable amount would be above maintenance of effort, that they could know ahead of time and perhaps plan for, as opposed to just saying, well, fine, we can give you something or not.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with anything that's been said, and it's the second time before I reference the Christmas already today. So I think, not just a disagree, but I think people are getting anxious for December to come. I guess theoretically, it's possible the state continues to increase their funding for education, or traditionally has. Sometimes it's been 2%, sometimes it's been 1%, and we've seen our amount go up. But I think unless our enrollment goes up, I think it's theoretically possible, we'd be flat with enrollment for 10 straight years, that the local contribution would be exactly the same amount for 10 straight years in a row. Now, we know with, like, healthcare costs going up, we can already predict, we're probably going to see some type of healthcare increase next year. We're hoping it's far less than our last year's increase. But what if that were to occur? I don't know what happens in some of the other counties with declining enrollment. I mean, you could argue with declining enrollment, you have less expenses, maybe less transportation, less of a need for teachers, the number of teachers you have, or whatever. But with flat enrollment, you would anticipate that there would be at least that same cost. And then what if insurance goes up, or fuel goes up, or parts go up, or books go up, or if you wanted to give a pay raise, or, like I say, health insurance, there'd be no mechanism. So I don't want to strong-arm the county commissioners at all in any way, but I think it would be kind of an interesting conversation, at least have with them, would they consider that? We've been relatively slow-growing the last number of years. When we saw this large growth in mid-2000, like 2004, '05, '06, maybe it was a little bit later in that, right when the housing boom was going on, we had a lot of students, and that certainly changed their budgeting. We also would anticipate it changed their revenue as well. But it is, I think, we didn't check with finance, I think it's theoretically possible, we could go years and years and years with the exact same contribution for the county commissioners. I think that's probably what's happened, is the state money's increased, the local money's, you know, only followed maintenance of effort, and that's why this thing has become more lopsided, with the state contributing substantially more. I mean, one time it was a 60-40, or at best 50-50, now it's completely reversed itself over time. And I suspect that's how it happened.
And I would just share, during the last session, it's my recollection, that there were three local boards that had to go to the legislature and ask for special legislation and a special grant, because they did have declining enrollment. So you see, while your enrollment's declining, you still have these costs that continue to increase. The other is that under the maintenance of effort law, a local government can petition to rebase the base. And this can be very, very contentious, where they ask that the amount that they contribute, the base be reduced. There's a very high threshold they have to meet to be allowed, and it's the state Board of Education that decides that, to be allowed to reduce their base maintenance of effort.
How has, Howard County, for example, I believe their student population has decreased recently. Has it stayed the same?
No, Carroll County, Carroll County has decreased for the last several years, and they have given a grant to the schools, I think three school systems, where they have had significant decrease in population, recognizing they still have the same number of buildings and the same, you know, that the class size may be going down, but they aren't really having lots less teachers and so forth. We're always in that middle ground. We're always, we're not the growing, because some of the growing ones got extra money because they were growing so fast. But if you're staying the same, we don't seem to be benefiting from extra money from the state.
But Carroll County petitioned for, how do they keep their budget in line with...
They actually put, there's a provision in the budget with legislative support that gives them additional money because they had lost students, and therefore their grant would be going down.
I know they closed the high school.
Yeah, they closed.
Preciparously.
Yes.
Which I would have wished we could have transported that high school up here, because it was only 30 years old, if I'm not mistaken.
I think they just had renovated some other high schools. I think they basically shut off growth. It wasn't, in our situation, we just haven't experienced much growth. In their situation, I think they had a change of election, and they turned growth completely off. There's growth available there, but they've turned it off, and that's what resulted in declining enrollment.
I think this suggestion here, or this proposal, this initiative, is a good one, simply because if I remember correctly, if we hadn't gotten some extra state money this year and for last year's budget, we would have been in dire straits. There were things that came up that we didn't know about. I don't remember the specifics anymore, but we got funding that we weren't aware, and that really helped the budget out.
I can't think of the term, but we actually fell in a category where for five years in a row, we hadn't received anything above maintenance of effort or something. They have a term for it, Tony, I don't know if you can remember it. David's on vacation this week, or he would know.
The maintenance of effort law has a provision, and they track each local government's contribution, its maintenance of effort, over a five-year period. And if your contribution doesn't reach at least the statewide average, then there is an adjustment to the maintenance of effort. It's mandated by law. And I believe Washington County had to increase its mandated amount by $1.8 million based on that five-year average, not meeting the state average.
Trying to think of what that term is. It's not a very flattering term.
It's referred to as low effort.
Low effort.
A low-effort county.
Washington County was identified as a low-effort county last year, and that's how we got a windfall from the state.
Yeah.
The windfall didn't come from the county, but it came from the state, of over $1 million. I don't remember the exact amount, but we were anticipating hundreds of thousands, and we got something, $2 point some million, as I recall.
Plus, we had a slight increase in student, it's like 100 and some or something, wasn't it?
That was that several hundred thousand we were expecting, based on our maintenance of effort per student rate. But then we had this low effort rate that drove us on up.
And now, will that continue this year?
No.
I think that's reestablished in our new base per student, I think.
You know, it's a rolling five years, and so they'll look at the most recent five years and do the calculations, so I don't know what that result will be. It may be that the $1.8 million adjustment brings it up to speed, but I'm not certain of that.
Okay. Well, you know, I think the best thing for us to do is make sure that we're speaking to the county commissioners before we go, you know, and...
And this would be an agenda item for the...
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't support it unless we at least had the conversation with them first.
And it would be very difficult to get something like this through unless it were the commissioners and the Board of Education speaking together.
So is this something we want to move forward for, an agenda item for a joint meeting? So that would be our second agenda item for the joint meeting. Okay, that brings us then to Amendment to Student Safety and Support Act, the reportable offense law. Mr. Trotta?
There is a law in Maryland that requires law enforcement to notify a local superintendent if a student is going to be enrolled in a school system and the student has been arrested, or if the student is actually already enrolled and is arrested. Staff has indicated to us that they're recommending two changes to the reportable offense law. The first is, is that when a student is in one school district and they transfer to another school district, the law merely says that the transferring school district may provide this information to the receiving school district. So the first recommendation is that it would be mandated. So if you're the receiving school system, the sending school system will be mandated, this is a confidential file, it's separate from the student's educational record. It often, it should include what the plan of action is to assist the student, the student and the student's education. So that's the first recommendation of staff, is that the law be amended to provide for that. The other is that there are certain students who are entrusted to the Department of Juvenile Services, Department of Social Services, and they often do not provide what staff sees as needed information to develop a student's educational plan. They are recommending that the law be amended to make it very clear that these agencies, and also any group home facilities that they work with, be required to share this information. And as the narrative indicates, the information is critical in developing a plan that will ensure that the student is placed in the most appropriate educational setting, benefits from available resources, and achieves academic, personal success and graduation. In addition, the information will assist in maintaining school safety throughout the system. So this is what they see as the need for this information. And once again, we would propose this be a local initiative. It may be that other local boards have an interest in it, but we would recommend we proceed as a local bill on this particular measure.
My expectation is that if it is introduced, that there definitely will be other jurisdictions looking at it, and perhaps it might be made into a statewide bill.
Thank you, Mrs. Kay.
And you've been the leader before in making some things become statewide bills.
Does anyone want to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Especially with gang activity and so forth throughout the state, I would think.
It is one of the categories where information is to be reported.
We have consensus for that. That brings us then to another local initiative, Automated Speed Enforcement: Dedication of Funds for School Resource Officers.
Once again, we received some recommendation from staff regarding the speed cameras. It's anticipated there's going to be a significant increase in the number of speed cameras. They may only be placed in school zones. That's one of the requirements of the law. And the recommendation is based on the cost that the system is now incurring for school resource officers, which is an extremely valuable service, but it's now costing $700,000 per year. This would be initiative, an initiative if approved by the board, that I would recommend that we have further discussion with the county commissioners. This proposal is seeking that some of that revenue be shared with the Local Board of Education to cover the cost or defray the cost of school resource officers.
I think that, what I've heard is some of that funds is supposed to go to a day reporting center, so that, a lot of that funds is maybe already earmarked. And then my next question would be, is when people start recognizing that they're going to be paying a fine, are they going to start slowing down? And then the funds won't be coming in, and then you just have a, you don't have sustainable resource, you know, for funding for that, so.
The information that we have from Mr. Ganley is, I believe it was last year, the state of Maryland, the revenue was in the $50 million range statewide. I think the previous year, it actually had gone down, it was, I believe, $54 million the year prior to that. So it is, it's something where you've seen some steady revenue over the years. The literature I've looked at, it's actually a 90-10% split, that is, 10% will go to the local government, the 90% of it goes to the General Assembly, to the General Fund of the State of Maryland. The State Controller's Office is the recipient of 90% of the funds. And it just goes into the general state treasury. So that is the split. I mean, we're looking for a local initiative, just to see if there's a possibility of some of, whether some of that revenue could be shared.
Out of the state, out of the state funds?
Well, we had really seen this as a, out of the local funds, but that certainly is...
So you're thinking to take something out of the 10%?
That's correct. Because it would be a local initiative, if the effort was to take it out of the state's 90%, then that's, that would, we would have to have a bill that affects the whole state of Maryland.
Do we...
I think more people would get on that bill and say, let's give us the money.
I think there might be around the state some jurisdictions joining in that effort.
I was just wondering, do we have any figures on how the revenue drops after, like, the camera's been there for so many years, does the revenue drop because people are familiar with that camera being there?
We can gather that information, see if it's available.
Someone told me that after two years, it drops off significantly. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but I was curious.
We can check and see if that's available.
Just add more cameras around Washington County schools.
Well, I think that's part of, there was an article in the paper where there is a plan to expand it to numerous other locations, so one would expect...
14 and 15, I think.
Additional revenue because of the expansion of the program.
It's a bad way to get revenue, though, if you're a Washington County resident, in my opinion.
Is, would this save the city, city government money as well?
The city of Hagerstown is also the recipient of this revenue, and I believe they're close to the 800 to $900,000 range, is what I've been told.
Do we fully fund their student resource officers?
Tony, this is $700,000 figure, is that just our cost of the resource officers, do you know?
Yes, that's our total cost.
I think it's just our part of the cost. The city, I think, they were doing like 37.5 per officer, plus a car and things like that. I think it changed two years ago.
Right. We have separate agreements with the county government and with the city government, and we have seen an increase in those costs every year. For the county, we actually cover 100% of the cost, including pension and benefits. For the city, it's not that, it's not 100%, but it's a substantial amount of the cost of the officer, officer's time.
I just, it'd be interesting, because one of the complaints I hear is we have a lot of officers, but many of them are dedicated to specific things and not necessarily to patrol. And so maybe this is an opportunity, if the city gets some relief there, they can add more officers to the force.
And I would just share, the quality of the service that we are receiving from both the county and the city is outstanding.
Yes, I agree with that as well.
Really, they're very responsive, receptive. It's a valuable resource. We're very fortunate to have that resource available to us.
So again, this would be an agenda item for joint meeting discussion with commissioners. So I believe that's our third one. And then that brings us to the final recommendation of the LRT. This is a local initiative, the repeal of the special law governing the term of office for the superintendent of schools for Washington County. Mr. Strata?
And by way of background, in 2015, there was a law that was passed that just applied to Washington County, and it provided certain provisions as related to the position of superintendent of schools, and the timing of the contract, and allowed for, in a sense, a rolling contract, a new four-year contract every year. The legislative response team examined this issue, and they believe that it's, they believe the law should be changed, so that the term of office of the superintendent in Washington County should be aligned with the requirements across the state. There's only one other county, local government, I'm sorry, local board that has a little different approach, and that's Prince George's County, which you're aware, that particular local government actually took over the management of the local Board of Education and the school system in Prince George's County about three years ago.
Is that why the county executive down there appoints five members to the school board now?
Yes.
That's correct. I mean, it's really come under the jurisdiction of the local government. It's much like any other agency of the local government.
I'm fine with this one.
Though this law was changed a couple of years ago, the board still has to agree to it or vote to support it, right? So we still have control over it.
We do. My understanding is this just allows us to do...
Allows us to do it.
Correct.
We don't have to.
Correct. But I think, personally, my thought is, when you have that possibility of allowing it, along with that comes an expectation that it will happen, or there's something wrong.
I would...
Or that, you know, it's...
See, we could use it as an incentive, too, that if we had a problem with a superintendent, hold that, it'll come up again the next year as a possibility, depending on where they were on their contract, of course. But I see it working both ways for a school board.
My outlook on this is just to bring us back in line with the other 22, 23, well, Prince George's a little different. So with the other 22 LEAs that, in the state, that still have this provision by state law.
Why?
What?
I know that in 2015...
Because I think we should be in line with the other counties. I don't think we should be different.
In 2015, when this initiative was discussed at the Legislative Committee meeting in May, there was a great deal of concern from folks from other counties that this was going to not be a local initiative, but we were trying to have it be a state initiative. And they were very vocal about not wanting that to happen.
We did work very hard to get this law passed, let me tell you. This wasn't an easy law to get passed, and I was frankly surprised when I saw it in your package for giving it up. But that's certainly not for me to decide. It's just, you know, we have latitude that other counties don't have, and you'd be giving up that latitude, whether it's latitude that you want or that you would rather not have. That's really the issue.
I think when we agreed to pursue this, yes, it wasn't the board's idea, it was suggested by the then superintendent, but it can help the board in that, and this happens in a lot of other counties in Maryland. You don't always, you don't have to keep looking for a superintendent every couple of years. If it's stability that superintendent's looking for, he or she would seek to utilize this particular law, but we would still have the right to agree to it or not agree to it. I see it as something that is kind of a, you know, token we hold in our purse that we can use or not use as we see fit if, if the situation is, works out that way.
I'm for moving it forward.
I'm opposed.
I'm sorry.
I like having the authority to do it, so I don't want to give up something that we worked hard to get.
I'm opposed to just what Artis said. I think that we put a lot of effort into it. Why give up power that we took so much time to put into it, especially if we have the ultimate control at the end of the day?
Anyone else?
I said move it forward.
Mike said move it forward. Do you want to weigh in?
Be in alignment with the rest, I say move it forward.
Is this going to put us in a bad light if we turn around after working so hard to get this accomplished? And I think, well, that county up there is willy-nilly, they can't make up their minds, they just, I don't know.
The point is, Melissa, excuse me, we don't have to do anything. We can do something. The way it's written right now, we can do that if we so desire. If the majority so desires, that they want to extend a contract, you know, after one year, two years, three years, we can do it. There's no obligation to do it. The law's there and it gives us flexibility. So, I mean, that's my mindset, so.
It could lead to a situation where, you know, future boards of education might extend a contract and give them a new four-year contract, and then something happens, board and the superintendent aren't getting along, then you got to deal with all the ramifications of that, buying out the contract and everything.
That was my, that was my thought as well, the buying out of the contract. And what I was thinking of. Thank you, Stan.
Initially, I was opposed to this. In 2015, I just thought it was the wrong thing to do at the time. And I think it was done at the request of the superintendent, and it was, I think it was done for a very specific reason, for a specific individual. And I think that while you see it as giving us flexibility...
Yes.
I see it as setting an expectation on the part of the superintendent, well, why aren't you doing this? And...
No harm in telling somebody why, we have to evaluate superintendent every year anyway.
I think it could create a lot of ill will and animosity, but that's...
And I did vote against it also, Mrs. Williams, so I can't support it.
All right, well, there are four of us that would like to see this move forward, at least to further discuss at our upcoming business meeting. Something I'm going to be giving a lot of thought and doing some, doing some further research and having some discussions with my counterparts in other counties to get a feel for what their thinking is. Our policy calls for us to discuss the composition of the legislative response team. The policy speaks to the fact that the president and the vice president will serve as a member of the legislative response team, the superintendent, legal counsel, and then the designated legislative representative. It also calls for the possibility of no more than one, at least one, but no more than one, member of the board. Currently, Mr. Stauffer, myself, and Mrs. Murray are the board members on the LRT. Mrs. Murray took the place of Mrs. Harshman. So come our business meeting, we will decide then what that composition will be. There's someone else that's interested in being that other board member, or if Mrs. Murray is interested in continuing?
No, I mean, yes, I would...
You would like to continue? Mrs. Fisher?
During the meeting, when we discuss it, can someone quickly run through the requirements for that position? Like, how many meetings there usually are?
Sure.
That would help people decide.
Formal meetings, not so many, but being inundated with emails and being at the ready to give a quick response to an email with regard to pending legislation. So in terms of availability and quick response time, I think those are probably the things that come to mind. So, but yes, we can certainly do that.
Did I hear you correctly, that like, right now, Mrs. Murray would represent, but we could add a fourth?
No.
It would only be three?
You can only have one.
Okay. Oh, as our representative?
Yes.
Okay.
So the policy calls for the president and the vice president...
Correct.
And one other.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
If you had an additional board member, it would trigger the Open Meetings Act requirements.
That makes sense.
And if one of you would rather do it, I would gladly step aside.
I like the time, you have the time to do it, which, benefit of retirement.
Mm-hmm.
And you're a good reader.
Okay, so then the other item left to discuss is the board's legislative representative in Annapolis, and that has been Mrs. Cade quite some time now. So that would be formal action on that item, on whatever, the 7th through the 21st, whatever it turns out to be, for the... whatever it turns out to be for the formal business meeting where we take, take action on these initiatives and core values.
There's also legislative priorities.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I know we're, we're very close to, I think we've actually, the time has elapsed. But my recommendation would be with the legislative priorities for 2018, that we, the one item that is now moot is the last item that is monitor legislation regarding the Early Student Success Act. That has actually been forwarded to the federal government. The, the plan has been approved. I, I think all the other priorities are relevant. There was an addition last year regarding advocate for funding for the Washington County Government's transportation program. I don't know if that's something we, we want to do in 2018. But all of the other items that are listed are still relevant and matters that we actually have been tracking since the last session. Of course, we have the urban improvement project, which is another one of our priorities that we will be very closely monitoring. Last legislative session, there were three bond bills that were passed that resulted in significant revenue for the project, different aspects of the project. I am anticipating additional bond bills this upcoming session. So we'll be carefully monitoring and advocating for the passage of those bond bills.
Is everyone fine with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So by consensus, we will move all of what we have agreed to to our business meeting for formal actions. Thank you.
Thank you.